So it made me introduce it to your viewing public that this is a work session.
Okay, this is a work session of the CRC but not specifically to possibly have a booth at the Cultural Chaos. And anybody who's watching wants to be part of that, just give us an email.
So there's no voting on things in our work?
No voting on things, no. We're not voting on it, we're just trying to put it all together.
Right.
And we don't have to do the minutes and, well, I guess you do.
Just a brief statement.
If people have responsibilities, they need to.
So to kick that off, April 1st is when we have to submit for a booth.
Oh.
We have to till that. It doesn't cost us anything because I can just put us in as nonprofit. Because we don't make anything out of this, we're just doing that as a committee. So we don't get charged. So that takes care of that.
So who's gonna fill out that application?
I can do that, as long as everybody's on board and we'll do that, I can get that done, yeah, okay.
So that kind of thing, I think, would be good in the minutes, like who's doing what.
Okay, so I'm gonna fill out the form and make it happen.
So can you, are we put, okay, is that in the minutes?
The work session minutes.
I will do that right away. I can do that tomorrow. So I'm handling that.
So what do we want in those minutes?
It's just, just the fact that I'm going to do the, I'm going to apply for the booth permit.
Jane will fill out booth permit paperwork and submit.
I didn't know.
I was gonna say, Jim will apply for booth permit.
Yeah, apply, yes, because there was a judging.
Yeah, that's all we need, is just like very little bits.
Yeah.
Action items.
Okay. See, now that we're being filmed, there were things I was gonna say and I can't say them now. So, but that's 'cause.
Like about the booth?
Well, about whether, you know, what's happening with the Cultural Chaos thing in general or just happenings that are going on. But it's only secondhand stuff, so I'm not gonna say it.
So I think we're, I think what we, we're gonna just operate from the perspective that it is gonna happen. It's not costing us anything to move.
Yeah, it's not gonna cost us anything, we're gonna, you know, we have things in line and if it doesn't happen this year, we'll have it for the next year for someone else to jump on.
Or we can move it to another event, like the Milk Run Live events.
Yeah, we could do, yeah, it's something we could do anyway, that's sort of like a pop-up.
Yep, right.
That's a good idea.
Great.
And I already told everybody that I do have a 10 by 10 pop-up thing with sides if it's, you know, if it's rainy day or something.
And if you decide not to come, we could still go.
I can still bring it down for you, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Depends, you know, everything, you know, the, everything could change in an instant, I mean.
We'll isolate it, you know, and clean it up before you go back to you. Maybe you need it in the back door or two weeks.
Yeah, I don't think quarantine is helpful.
Right, right, it's been the Bluegrass Festival, don't worry about it.
So I've been trying to come up with, brainstorm with myself, some like slogan ideas.
I've done too, I couldn't even get it down on paper. It was when I was going for my walks, I was like, okay, East Hampton, Good Neighbors since 17, what is it, 1785?
That's interesting, that's interesting. Sometimes we just trigger somebody else to think of something else.
Yeah.
Yeah, great too. Yeah, so I was also thinking, we had talked before about maybe having some car magnets, which are, what do they call them, I don't realize? They call them, they call them bumper magnets. So it's a bumper sticker, but it's a magnet. I did some research on that, but anyway, I'm trying to picture a slogan in a fit on a bumper magnet, and that's hard. It's really challenging to get something to be that concise, you know, that small.
Yeah, what happens if you have like four words, Good Neighbors.
Yeah, so the best I came up with was for conciseness and it's not great for a car sticker bumper thing. Bumper, I can't, magnetic bumper thing.
Bumper magnet.
I can't get the word sticker out of it. Is like East Hampton colon City of Great Neighbors.
That's gonna be squished, that's even a lot.
Well, but, but, okay, so could you do East Hampton equals Great Neighbors?
Yeah.
There you go, that would.
East Hampton hashtag Great Neighbors.
Oh, that's.
Oh, yes, that's even smaller.
That's even, that's even catchier, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay, I put that one here.
East Hampton.
From a hashtag.
From a hashtag.
Hashtag Great Neighbors, I like that. I like that a lot. That's really cool.
Yeah, I do too.
With it.
With it.
Or happening. Hashtag Great Neighbors, I like that. That's awesome. You know, I was thinking, I had seen on Facebook, or I don't know, different places, someone had come up with a East Hampton Small City Big Heart. And I saw a little cute little logo with that, and I thought that was a really cute slogan, it was. And I'm not sure that has a specific link to any particular segment of the city, but I thought it was cute. So yeah, I was thinking that if we could, I don't know, that hashtag Great Neighbors, that's really good.
I do, yeah.
That's really good. So if we could even like maybe have t-shirts made up for us, so the people that are gonna work at this one? Like so we could have those t-shirts on and then maybe we could have some, that would work, I think, for a magnetic, what is it? Bumper magnet.
Bumper magnet.
I get that, right?
We'll call it a bumper magnet.
Yeah, bumper magnet.
I will get from Owen, 'cause I'm gonna see him on Thursday.
T-shirt.
I'll get the addresses or the links to getting both the t-shirts and those, 'cause he had both printed up for his campaign.
Oh, for his campaign. I did a little bit of research online for bumper magnets. And they reached a price from online from like a dollar, depending of course the quantity that you buy, a dollar fifty to two dollars each roughly.
Oh, yikes.
The magnets are so much more expensive.
How many would we want, do you think? Like, do we know the numbers of how many people go to Cultural Chaos?
Oh, a lot.
Do we know, how many?
I was looking up from last year, but it's.
You know, only a tenth of them would want a magnet or something.
Yeah, I mean, I thought maybe even just to start, an initial order of 300 or something.
Yes, I was thinking 250 to 300 would be a good.
We could also, we could also.
Sell.
Well, no, I had a better, I had, you know, Abby was talking about the survey.
Yeah.
If they fill out a survey, they get.
Yes, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yes, yes.
A carrot.
Come fill out.
Yes, there you go, good, link.
So I do think if we do that with the bumper magnets and the t-shirts, that we should get a graphic designer involved and to pay particular attention to the layout of that, the font, all that, to make it look very professional and passively, maybe some cohesive element to it. Yeah, so anyway, and I know one, somebody mentioned that they knew a graphic designer.
I do, I can ask her, she can.
Might be willing to help us out?
Owen, help us out, yeah. Yeah, she, I mean, she does.
The other person who would be interested, who's the guy who does, did the East Hampton mural? He does East Hampton's, his website, he does a bunch of East Hampton stuff. He's the little guy.
Are there any colors? So East Hampton hashtag Good Neighbors.
Well, East Hampton.
It's more, it's, yeah, if there's any color that defines our city, I think it's that burgundy or maroon, because it's our school.
Everybody goes with the school.
I always think of the mural as our city colors.
Do you know like Tom Papalotto?
Just like those blue.
Yes, that's him, thank you. So I would go with somebody we know, like ask her, but he might be, he might be very interested in, you know, volunteering and stuff.
Does anyone have a relationship with him?
I don't know. But they, 'cause he also sells, he has a website where he sells like some of that stuff, doesn't he?
Whoever we decide to pursue, I would love to have a conversation with that person, just to talk about things, elements that might be important to us.
All right.
Design elements.
What?
Yeah, let's see.
Let's get a, let's get a point of those elements. What are the elements?
Well, my thought is, I'm gonna, I'll ask my friend if she'd be interested in doing this. And then if she says yes, then I'll ask, I'll tell her that there's somebody on the committee who is much better with marketing and would like to talk about design organization, yeah. So why don't I try?
You know the first thing.
So he has a bumper sticker, a mug, and a t-shirt.
About East Hampton?
It's with the mural.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Bumper sticker, mug, t-shirt.
Oh, cool. And so then that sort of makes me think too, like I don't know, we all credit it, created by Tom for East Hampton City Arts, sponsored by Williston, Hampton Wholesale, East Hampton Cultural Council, Massachusetts Cultural Council in 2008. So it does make me think like a little bit about, like what about city arts? And I'm just throwing this out here, like.
Oh, like we might be stepping on their toes?
Well, maybe just like, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I'm not dialing in enough to know everything city arts does. But certainly, I don't know if there's a, if there's a connection there at all, or do we just go off and do our own thing? You know what I mean? Like.
Just think we could do our own thing.
Well, no, I know, but is there an opportunity, like, to connect with another organization in town, like community-wise? You know, community connection and networking-wise and that kind of thing. I just, you know. Just like saying to them, hey, we are, you are city arts, we are looking at designing some outreach stuff for the committee, for East Hampton, you know, we have somebody maybe who we could use, but do you wanna be involved in the design at all? I mean, I don't know.
The other thing is, I really hate to start to, I mean, when it comes to, I don't wanna bring in a whole bunch of people to be part of a decision-making, 'cause if you have a whole bunch of cooks in the kitchen, it just makes for a disaster. And then with a really watered-down, non-effective piece, 'cause you're trying to help.
Yeah.
You're trying to appease way too many people.
Right.
So I'd personally rather not drag more people into a decision about a logo for us.
Okay.
But, I don't know, it's important to work with a graphic designer on it.
Oh, yeah, 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 for sure.
Yeah. Can I take a step back for a second? There's gonna be a place in the application for the booth that they're gonna want me to explain what we are. Any ideas of how we should word that for this particular event?
And we're the city's community relations.
But, you know, like what we're gonna do, should we?
What is our booth gonna do?
Yeah, yeah, like, we're gonna, are we gonna film, do we know that? And we're gonna film interviews, we don't know that yet.
I would say we're gonna do outreach to the community.
Okay.
And.
Community outreach.
Community outreach.
Community outreach.
Community outreach, yeah, perfect.
Yeah, that's it.
In terms of that, not to move off the subject too quickly about the graphic design piece of it, but if you wanna pursue that person.
Yes.
Oh, we probably should talk about things like color before we move on. But I was just gonna say, I did talk to Tim Riley at East Hampton Media too about the whole video.
Oh.
Piece of history, but we won't move on to that, so let's finish talking about key points.
Yeah, so other than the East Hampton, the colors.
So that's something to talk about, yeah, like what, maybe we don't have to do maroon, but that's kind of an identifiable color with our community. I know.
But you could say, so there's many elements in our community, what about Williston's colors, right? I mean, is it because it's the city and the city is part of a high school?
It's a private institution.
Private.
And our public school. 'Cause I think even the East Hampton seal is maroon, like on their pages.
Yeah, our website is all maroon and.
Yeah.
Share with you that for a lot of years, there was, I don't know if you've seen it, but a capital E that was maroon and white.
Yeah, on people's cars.
Yeah, 'cause it was used in driveways.
Yeah, and that was like hugely popular, like people were asking all the time, where can I get that bumper sticker? Where can I get that? I really want that for my car. And I don't even know the history or origin of how that came to be.
It was, it was from like the high school, it was like in athletics.
It was like a money raiser.
And the ones on the driveway was football boosters.
Yeah, people paying for that, yeah. So anyway, I know that there was a lot of demand, like I used to pick up on people wanting those bumper stickers and they weren't around anymore. So I'm just saying that that identity and that connection with the community and those colors and like the big E and all that, like there's a, there's something there.
I think we should stay in solidarity with this high school. Who was it and what, I forget what meeting it was, but someone had mentioned as community relations people, we should try to attend more sports events.
That was Patty.
Well, that was Patty, yeah.
That was Patty.
And that was a great idea.
Right, and I was gonna say too, like, people, a lot of times people are looking for maroon and white things to wear to school events, and it doesn't necessarily have to be like for that sport.
The team.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys know how much maroon and white I have, that's ridiculous. Yeah. So I would look for a network.
So are we all comfortable with?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that way it's, we've got something that we link to.
And I think for that.
And that applies to the t-shirts as well, I'm assuming.
I think it's a good idea.
I would vote for a maroon t-shirt.
Yes, I mean, that's, all my t-shirts are some form of, are some shade of maroonish, so.
I suppose.
It's just, you know, just interesting, I guess I'm just thinking like from the devil's advocate point of view, like, like there's a lot of people on here who don't have any association with a school, right? Like they're elderly, they didn't have kids that went through the schools here, or like me, I didn't have any kids. How my taxes go to help the schools, but I don't know, it's interesting. There's so many reasons why people know East Hampton's not because of the schools, I don't know, it's just an interesting thought.
Yeah.
You know, I don't work for the schools, you know.
Bring it up.
I'm just trying to think of where my.
The topic for another day, how do we get the general population more interested in the schools?
So it's a good idea.
And interact with younger kids.
But we could also say, why not get them more interested in the arts community? Like, I go to all art openings and stuff like that, and I know a lot of artists and like some of them lived here for 20 years, you know. Like, I don't know, there's so many elements to a community, it's not just the school, you know, like, you know what I mean?
No.
Right, you know. But like, why not the colors for the police department, you know, or why not the colors for the oldest business in the town, or, you know.
But I mean, like the homepage, East Hampton, Massachusetts, it's maroon, you know. And like, I think even Big E's wears maroon. They have maroon quarter zips for when it's cold, you know, like, I do, like, it seems, you know, and I appreciate your point. I do, because that's a different, you know, it's not the world that everybody is necessarily in.
Anyway, and one thing about diversity, like we want people who normally go to sporting events to go to some arts events. We want some arts event people to go to some sporting events and some church events, and like, you know, like we wanna promote diversity.
The thing that's tricky too is, in my opinion, there's not a lot of other colors that go with maroon. Like, there's one school that has maroon and blue and it's like, oh, you know, and we're not maroon and gold. And let me tell you, people will get mad if you do that, you know, so.
Well, then Big E's wear green aprons, why is it saying maroon green, hunter green?
Yeah, but then why are we throwing green in there?
You know, right, like. Because we want everybody, everybody to be environmentally conscious.
Well, the thing is, if you keep it to one color, like, or you, it's gonna be way cheaper, right? If you have a third color and you're like, you're increasing your top on anything exponentially.
'Cause that scans out the best.
In my opinion, public schools have a special role, that we fund them and children there are the next generation. And if we can have them get involved in the arts and all these other things, so much to the better.
And identify with our message.
Yeah, that's.
And I wouldn't wanna alienate them, wouldn't wanna alienate anybody, but it's nice to see like diversity learned from the beginning and have them all included and feel appreciated.
So if we ever had a, sorry, if we had an event that could bridge that gap or just, we could bring it to one of these other equity meetings. Like, we could show up and say, we're doing this, here's a connection for you guys, you might wanna jump in on this, so.
Yeah, and maybe I don't know where we're going in terms of whether we have events or whether we support. I mean, we can, I mean, I would have no qualms against supporting a lot of different things, like art events.
Right.
But, you know, it'd be nice to support a lot of different diversities. As far as colors, I mean, if people, if somehow this is how our town identifies, might not be my favorite colors, but I might think, fine.
I think this is what Shannon was sending that out for anyway, merely to establish a link between us and them. So.
So.
That's what I got.
Back to colors.
Back to colors.
So are we all comfortable?
I think it's a goat, yeah. It's, that's.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just not sure what other color you would add in or choose instead of? And what significance, like red, so what, you know, or yellow, what?
I think it's a good start to start simple, and I would suggest that with the graphic designer as well, you know. And then if, as things, you know, down the road, whatever happens, things can grow and, you know, whatever. One thing I do wanna say is there is a shockingly bizarre number of different colored maroons.
Yes.
So I'm just saying.
Be aware. 'Cause you've got a closet full of them, apparently. What I would suggest is.
I have at least five different maroon t-shirts, all different colors.
Really? 'Cause like in working with a graphic designer, is that maybe there'd be a back and forth, and I could do a back and forth with her? And then ultimately.
Oh, yeah, that's a fun thing.
Maybe there'd be like three different options of the design elements to bring to the committee for you all to comment and vote and share, and like it would be a committee decision, whatever we would adopt. But maybe I could just work with the designer to get us to that point.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
So if Elizabeth does not have the capacity to do this, what would be the next?
Bumper, the next?
I know a great graphic designer, but I, it might involve money. I mean, I just, I feel like.
Well, it's gonna involve money, even if this Tom Papalotto, he's a business person, right? He doesn't just do things for free.
I don't know, I mean, he might, because of what we are.
Okay.
I mean, there were those.
I mean, we should always ask that first, yes.
Right, 'cause my person isn't from here, so like, it's a little different, but.
Well, I think your person and then possibly see what Tom Papalotto has to say about it, if that's.
And that might not be his forte.
It might not be, he may say that's not his thing at all.
He'd be an artist, and that's.
Right, I mean, he might say, why don't you guys just use my East Hampton mural?
Right.
And we can say, well, because that's not.
'Cause that's not us.
Too many colors, and it'll be too expensive.
It doesn't have hashtag, right?
Okay, well, do you wanna check with your person first?
Yeah, I will, I will.
And then maybe you could just let me know.
Chain.
Okay. I don't mind tapping into our marketing department at the bank either, they are a great team. So I don't know what their capabilities are of creating a new design, sometimes you do outsource those kind of things at work, but again, being a community bank, I think they would be super open to helping out in any way they could, but.
Banks are always good sponsors.
Yes.
Well, especially if we put their logos in there.
Well, we're in this kind of town, we gotta look at it.
Over five, I did ask about a budget for us from the mayor, and she said that there would be money, so we didn't. She said, come up with.
Yeah, come up with something.
What you're thinking.
Yes. Once we have the details, we submit it and hopefully get someone to do it.
Yeah, so like 300 bumper stickers could cost us anywhere from like $4.50 to $600.
Yeah, even for the pride committee, we gave ourselves a thousand dollar budget to work with. I don't know how we got it, I think we went for donations. Oh, we did, we had a music event and we, you know, we had lots of donation events, you know, that we, as many as we could, to get the ball rolling, and we did collect enough money to get the t-shirts, glasses, and all that stuff.
Okay, so.
And then I guess too, in the meantime, and like I'm sort of racking my brain, I feel like I know somebody who's a graphic designer, but it's not coming to me.
It would be so easy to find someone, there's probably like 20 of them that work in Eastworks and.
Yes, they're all over the place.
There's Fox on all.
But yeah, hopefully, yeah, it'll be easy.
Cool.
So in terms of the video, I talked to Tim Riley, two confessions today. 'Cause I was like, oh, sure, I was supposed to do that, I had, I meant to do this for a long time. But he responded very favorably to the idea and said he thought that that sounded like something that they would be happy to get involved with and help us out with, and he's gonna check with someone in his organization and just get back to me and confirm that, and we could talk about it in more detail.
Correct.
But it all sounded very positive and encouraging.
Good.
That would be the kind of project he would embrace, yes. So on, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
On that note, I just wanted to share with you, I became aware of, I was thinking about videos, and I became aware of this video that Berkshire County recently did, it's on YouTube. And not that this is, you know, we were obviously going with a Great Neighbor theme and wanting to interview people or get that message moving. But I thought this could, once again, maybe spur some brilliant ideas. And I thought it was interesting, so I found out that, if you don't mind, I'll just play it for you on my phone, like you won't be able to see it well, but if that's okay, I think you'll still get the point. So Berkshire County did a thing, and it's on YouTube, and I just like, I kinda like the idea of the music, the liveliness, the excitement of it, and I just wanna share it. I hope this isn't gonna load. It's called Happy in the Berkshires.
Aww.
It's very long too, I wouldn't recommend anything this long, but it's, it's good, it's four and a half, four minutes, 42 seconds, it's too long.
You get, you get two minutes of mine.
Right, right, it shouldn't be over.
Minute fifty-two is what you get.
Yeah, I know, I hope this is gonna load.
Can we get it on?
There's no signal down, there's no signal down.
Well, there's a Wi-Fi.
Oh, you have Wi-Fi.
Yeah, there's Wi-Fi, so it's called, I can't quite see it, Happy in the Berkshires on YouTube, yeah, okay.
Oh, then we can see a bigger view.
Yeah, if this thing will behave itself.
Oh, I gotta wait, let's see, I gotta, let's see. There we go.
Well, there you go.
It just says Happy in the Berkshires. I'm gonna turn it to you here. It's locked.
Yes, it's a video.
Did you guys see the police department one? It was like a southern town.
Oh, that was good for a while, that's pretty good.
Funny, that's, well, I guess, yes, it's kind of music, but I wouldn't. Funny, that's, well, I guess, yes, it's kind of music, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't hear that in Pink of the Berkshires.
No, I know, we had to pick them up.
I picked up table wood.
Wow, this is great. Such a great song.
I know. It's so good.
You came up with your color words, I'm seeing it on our pages. But it's kind of cool, like, I don't, there's a few, like, courses that I'd have it, like, they're supposed to be highlighting all the attractions.
You don't know what anything is.
You can't tell, as an outsider, you can't tell what they are. Like, they have table wood in here, they have all kinds of stuff. If you're not really zoomed in, you can't even tell. That smoke, all this stuff, you have to really kind of know it. So it's not good for somebody who's not.
But is it for the community members or is it for people across the country, right, or across the states? I don't know.
Well, it's probably only gonna be most effective to their own, cause they're gonna recognize each other and know what it means.
And the goal wasn't.
I'm guessing the goal might have been broader, exposure than that.
Yeah.
But anyway, so I'd be a little, like, the length of it, like, it's quite a lot. It was so fun and so cute.
Well, and they got, they clearly got a lot of different community members in different areas together to do something.
But could you see a two-minute video on our, like, East Hampton page? Like, when you pop up, that would be so cool.
It would be so cool, right.
I'd be like, I'm new to East Hampton, like, oh, I want to go stand at the pond and take selfie.
I mean, and there's a lot of different, like, we kind of have a goal with this whole, promoting this whole concept of great neighbors. And that's a little different than Happy Happy, showing all the attractions of the city. It's a totally different mission, but it made me think, like, maybe there's a way to make this really fun and really, like, not boring, but really energized and like where people are like, hey, I want to live there.
But I have a contest for somebody to compose the East Hampton Town Spirit Song.
Yeah.
Well, and when we were talking.
You'd have to get a lot, yeah, you'd have to make a contest.
There's so many musicians here, so many lyricists and poets here.
You can't just contract someone to do it, because you don't know what you're gonna get. You wanna, you wanna see what people come up with and then.
Would we even like, this is what we have a message to be about, you know, like?
Well, cause wasn't the original idea of the video for people to say what they thought would be great?
Oh, our video at the booth, that's what it's all about, yeah. These are gonna be interviews. I think what Deb's bringing up is a whole other project.
Well, it could be, but I was just trying to spur ideas, ways to make it even more something.
You can take some great clips, right, from.
So what I was thinking was like, something like that, but like if, it's like, instead of interviewing people, it's like, you know, kind of like one word, you know, and then that could potentially be compiled into something really fun and, and really sharp with music, with that, you know, and, and where you can say, you know, three words or whatever, like, but keep people really short, because first of all, we don't want people talking forever. But then you pull out.
Right, you edit it out.
The one word, you know.
And you can have visual that goes with it. And you can have music incorporated into all that too. Like, it could be all hashtags, hashtagged, like, it could be. And then you feature all different people saying, well, like the one word or two words that it means to them. And you could mesh that with, I mean, that's where East Hampton Media would come in to really be really working too.
I picture like hashtag Eagles and you're at the sports games, hashtag arts and you're, you know, at a unbailing or cultural chaos, you know, different events.
But there's two different objectives too, like, there's a different, if it's a promotional video for all the attractions in East Hampton, that's one thing.
Which I don't think we're really.
It's not really our mission.
Right.
But if it's about promoting good neighbors, that's another niche, you know, so. Not to say that, you know, kids at the high school couldn't be part of that, like, absolutely, but like, we need to keep our focus. We'd have to keep our.
Yeah, it can be part of the ser, no, the survey we talked about, somebody's gonna have to come up with some questions or we're gonna have to
I know, it's on my schedule tonight.
Well, maybe that's where we get the one or two, three words of what people say.
Yeah, and then, and then at the end of the survey, it's, it, give us your one, one to three words of, you know, exactly that. And, or ask them at the end of the survey, would you consider being, um, video recorded and give us that answer?
Or, this is a thought, just a thought, we probably would want to get the filming of the people saying the words.
That.
Right.
Yes, well, right, that's what I mean, right then, yeah. And not everybody who's gonna answer that written survey wants to be on film.
Right.
Right.
Maybe that's a two, so maybe they're two separate things. Well, we can flesh all that out, but maybe that's two separate things.
Well, we make it part of the survey, say, you know, would you come over here and give us your.
Or you just ask that people are coming up, be like, hey, you just handed in your survey, we'd like to do a video.
So, it's a survey. That's gonna take some thought.
Well, cause we gotta figure out what we want to know.
Yeah.
Right.
What do we want to know?
Have you encountered.
And that's a great question.
Determination. So I'm sorry.
Do your identity.
Oh, I just hate to have us present looking for bad information, looking for negative.
Yeah.
Right, no, no, everything has to remain.
Not at a festival.
Yeah, everything has to remain positive.
Right. I don't want to see us asking questions that are leading for negative.
But, but how will we find out what's needed?
Do we hear if the residents are not, and if their residents, what's your favorite, I mean, maybe everybody, what's their favorite thing about East Hampton?
Well, yeah, I think we want to have.
We can ask, like, how can we improve as a city?
What would you like to see improved in the community?
Yeah, that, that kind of thing maybe, but.
Right, really make it like, you can't just be like, the potholes.
Well, you're gonna get that, you're gonna get there.
Isn't their favorite thing? But yeah, I think there's a way to ask that, um, that improved list, um, you know, what would, there's a way to ask that question, so the answer, so it could be more positive.
So we're having like two different purposes here. We have a written survey for those who we have meaningful conversations with, who we would say that it would be an opportunity to get meaningful input from the community for our goals and objectives, our purpose. And the whole separate thing is this video.
Yeah.
It says.
That's a really good point, cause I'm starting to, so then there was this idea of, so when Abby bought up the, you know, the, the survey, but then we also talked about like just writing on the.
Post something.
You know, what makes a great neighbor. So are we, is the survey like a downer on the whole celebratory thing and, or, or is it just too much? And it's not that I don't want to, I, I think it could be valuable, is it, and, and I would also say that, well, I suppose what you could do, do the fun stuff and say, would you like, then say, would you like to fill out the survey? And if you do, if you could just drop it in this box, whatever. Because I think if people take it home, they're likely not gonna send it anywhere.
Oh no, we want it done there. And I'm thinking of, did anyone attend the opening of the Art in the Orchard this last fall? Okay, well, Tom Peak had this.
Oh, yeah.
Poll, one of these, um, choice, ranked choice polls. And I forget, I don't even know what the subject was.
Oh, it's funny though.
But we could do that. We could have like a ranked choice poll and then they, that would give them, you know, all they're gonna do is check things off, you know. What's your favorite, one, two, three, what's your, and give a list of, of things. And then all we'd have to come up with is a list of things, not a bunch of questions.
So is, so this would be like a list of three or five things that people would want the Community Relations Committee to be involved in to.
Doesn't even have to be that specific. It could be more of, you know, list 10 positive things that we feel are positive of East Hampton. And, and let them choose what their favorite, next favorite and third favorite are.
But I thought the survey, but how is that gonna relate? I, I thought, and maybe I'm misunderstanding what Abby was hoping for. I thought she was hoping to find out what people were interested in us doing.
Well, I thought that was the interview. Cause if, if we said, if that's gonna be the filmed interview of what people want to do, then we can really edit those things and pull out the things and you could make a comp, you know, a montage of all the different answers and, and take all the positive stuff and make it nice.
My idea was that the video was gonna be about being great neighbors.
Yeah, that was my idea.
And then, yeah, great neighbor, like, like feel. Collection of what that means.
Right.
Being a great neighbor in East Hampton.
That's diverse enough. I mean, that's, we're gonna get a bunch of different takes on that.
Right, but, but I thought Abby was looking for more.
Feedback on our, our roles. Interaction with us as a committee.
That's what I, the impression I got from her that I.
I have a thought. So what if, you know, our, our booth at the Cultural Chaos is the fun stuff, the vision board where you're writing stuff down? Maybe we can take interviews, just being a presence, but what if we potentially have a couple volunteers walking around with a survey that you could kind of do, right, maybe three questions that they can do, kind of going around? I just, I'm, I keep thinking the survey to find out answers of what the community wants from us and just being a presence, they are two different things, in my mind.
And then, and I'm, I'm wondering if it's too, we're trying to accomplish too much. That maybe what we need to do is get people aware that there's this community that we exist.
Yes.
And this is.
And I'm thinking one whole bunch of times.
This is what, you know, that we're trying to promote, great neighbors. And I bet we'll get questions, I bet we'll get comments, I bet we'll get, oh, it would be great if you could.
And we could even have, once we get that exposure, and that's goal number one, then we have a publicized, uh, meeting where we really invite people in, come and tell us what you want, what you see us as and bring us in and really force the issue of, you know, get your ass over here.
Yeah, we should let them know.
All right, I'm writing a slogan, get your ass over here.
I like that. I think the, the culture of chaos is fun and I think, you know, wanna.
But honestly, the meetings could be on a sign somewhere, you know, just say, the first Tuesday, Monday, whatever, and the second Tuesday.
Well, you can even get people the bumper magnet and a schedule of our meetings.
Yes, okay, nice, nice. Okay.
Cause there's a riveting night's activity for you. You're gonna love this. Until we have 70 people sitting in this room all the way to come. But I think you're right. I think if, if we just start out with the goal of exposure, that's something.
I like that, yeah.
Because also I think people aren't, they're there to have fun, party and it's festive and they're there with friends, there are people there that are in East Hampton and if you get bogged down in what do you think, well, like, people aren't gonna want to deal with you really, honestly. If I want to eat my ice cream, leave me alone.
Right.
Yeah.
Some people will, some people will share the.
And that's what, that's what I mean.
Yeah, it'll come naturally.
People making comments, making suggestions.
People who are interested or curious or they will. They'll start the ball rolling anyway. Okay, so we're staying focused on the Great Neighbor campaign, okay?
Yeah. No, that, that was good from the beginning.
Yeah, I, I have a question about the video app called their path.
Are we great or we good neighbors?
We're great.
Aren't we?
We're great.
We're great.
That's our mission.
Yeah, East Hampton hashtag great neighbors.
Unless you judge the way you are.
I've always wanted a neighbor.
I'd like to be your neighbor.
Mo should be my neighbor.
Mo should be my neighbor.
That's right. That's copyrighted, I'm sure.
Well, they will, so how would, like, a little bit, is there a little bit more like, um, like, how does that, how would that work, the videotaping?
I don't know.
Okay. Like, they would, would East Hampton Media help with that part or are they?
Probably not. They're probably gonna look for us to say, this is exactly what we want.
Oh.
Would you always do that?
Cause you, all right, so I've got here that you said Tom Rowley said he's, he's on board with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Oh, I think they're willing to, to participate and help us do it.
But they're not gonna be the lead.
They'll, they'll film it.
Oh, that's, that was my question.
Yes, yes, so, yes, they'll come and film it, great.
They'll film it.
But we need to know what our plan is.
But we need to tell them what to film when, how long, you know, all the specifications.
And we'll bring one of us there asking the question.
Oh, certainly, yeah, of course, so that's what we're gonna, we're gonna choose who's gonna be there, uh, if we're not all there, but.
Hey, I'm a booth there, a lot of heroes, hot and.
I realized I don't have a will yet. I have to.
Oh, no.
Right, yeah, you came and saved me for a while, so you need to get water.
What booth were you at?
I, um, sell Usborne books, so I had a Usborne book area.
Great, so what do we have so far?
Application.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Application, I'm gonna check with my graphic designer.
We're okay.
And if she's willing to do it, um, connect her with Deb. If not, then.
We've got a Plan B.
We have to.
If there's money, if there's money to spend, then I don't see a problem getting a graphic designer, that, the uncertainty I have is who to ask, who, like, donate their services, that's.
Yeah, always get the donation thing first, cause we're a nonprofit.
Right, where can we, where could we put out at like, you know?
Looking for.
The Chamber or.
The Chamber.
We could ask, maybe we could ask Mo if she could, uh.
Definitely, yeah.
Or we could just look on, um, the Chamber site, there's a couple of East Hampton people.
There are. So, let's go with your person first.
Right, okay, and then, now, now Deb, would it be? I don't know if anybody knows anybody on the Chamber site, but since we don't necessarily want to wait a whole month to then move on. You can send an email that says the graphic designer is not on board to everyone.
Yeah.
Have a discussion.
Right.
Right. That's just a fact.
Yeah, in fact, I think it's probably good for us all to be in the loop.
Right, right, or at least let them know that they are, we are, are or are not.
And one-on-one, we can have a conversation.
Right. I'm just thinking, if, if for whatever reason she can't do it.
Oh my God, there are so many.
Then what, what should be our Plan B so that it doesn't.
We don't have to tell Debbie from any design.
So then maybe reaching out to Mo at the Chamber and seeing if she has a recommendation on someone?
I can pursue it if you want, like, if this doesn't work.
Okay.
So is our assumption that we're, we're pursuing this, um, as a donation from this graphic designer? That's our assumption at this point?
Well, that's the first ask. And then if we can't get it, then we will, you know, we have to pay.
So it's donated.
And we, and we're, we're gonna have about, uh, by the time we make all the decisions, we'll, we'll probably have only 30 days to get things done, so that's quick, that's quick. Now, the, the t-shirt people that Owen uses are very quick and we've got, you know, that happened.
Were they local?
Unless they were in China.
Unless they were in China, no, no, these were, I forget where.
Well, no, the blanks you made, everything.
But I'll, I'll let you know who those blanks are.
Another person to.
On Friday.
Talk to would be Brad at Mantis. They have an in-house graphic designer, then he could do the t-shirts, um, and you could add, if, we probably have to decide, but I know like Brad will give a good rate if you let him put his logo on the sleeve. Usually, I mean, that was for athletics, for like boosters, not for athletics, we couldn't do it for athletics, but for boosters, you know, often he would say he'll, you know, for a t-shirt. But he, they have a graphic designer in-house and. But. I don't know, like, what level, you know, for t-shirts.
We used to, uh, initially for a whole bunch of t-shirts. Um, and then we found out that the people that used to be at the UPS store and next to the big Y.
Oh, that's now the.
It's now the medical place, yeah, they've moved down the road.
Hampton Plaza.
Yeah, Hampton Plaza, down two, two-on-two there. They have a graphic design part of their shop and, and their prices on t-shirts beat everybody's. And they, and they were quick.
Who was that?
Brian at UPS Store, or it's called the Package Store.
Package Store, yeah.
I'm trying to think, I know who the owner of it is, I can't think of his name.
Yeah, the old fellow, yeah, he started that, I don't know if he's, and I don't even know if they kept that part of the business when they moved.
The package piece? The package piece?
Yes.
Still needs
No, they moved to Westfield.
Westfield.
So, and it's on the tip of my tongue, his name, I can't think of it, but I worked with him years and years, and I was on some stuff.
Yeah, and they had that, but I don't know if anyone was gonna take it over.
That's right.
But anyway, but I know that Mantis was good about helping with designs.
Yeah.
And they were great with us, so
Good to know.
They're just pricey.
Yeah. The only concern I would have, like, with a, like, a t-shirt place graphic designer is it I don't know the, you know, the level of
Right.
Sort of coolness that it could have.
Right, and there's usually a difference between someone who's designing specifically for one medium versus an overall graphic designer.
And we're kind of And if we want to, if we want something that we feel like we want, like, I would think we would want kind of a, like, a graphic designer who is really, like, stylized. Right. For that, so
Right.
And then we can put it on whatever media.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just send them the
Yeah.
The
Okay, great.
Okay, so, and I just looked on the Chamber thing, and like, the one is in Florence, and the other one is ProMark, which they do like big signs and stuff. So I don't know if the Chamber is the right avenue.
Let's seek out our local talent first.
Okay, so, you'll start off.
Yes, I'll start off.
We'll see how that goes, and then we'll kind of play, A, C, E.
So who's going to, if that's not a go, who's going to look for other?
I'll pick up on it, unless you want to, I don't wanna take it away from you.
No, that's okay, if you've got the time to do, to do that piece, I don't know of anybody else around, so I'd be In the dark as much as you say.
Does anybody control
I mean, yeah, yeah, if you, if you find yourself without someone, I know several, so, but I won't go there until you've, cause I, I don't wanna, like you said, too many people in the, let you guys do that. Work it out, but if you get stuck for something
So Mary, which person doesn't, isn't gonna be able to do it, then would you send your people to Deb, and she can follow up with them?
Sure, I'll, I can ask.
Okay, so I'll do, I'll blank it.
But you had someone in mind, too.
Yeah, I just don't know about, I don't know about
Oh, okay.
I'm a little hesitant, she's fabulous, but I'm a little bit hesitant to ask, I asked for a ton of favors for the school campaign, the middle high school project, I mean, for the high, well, high school
When was the last time you talked to her about it?
I know, so I, she
Hello, you haven't, you haven't gotten a favor from me for a while, guess what, I got another one.
She's done a lot of favors, so that's one thing I'm a little bit like
Yeah.
Uncomfortable.
Right.
But if push came to shove, I would do it, but that's my, I'm just
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be cool if the border of our magnet could be like the mountain?
Or like the bottle thing?
The Motown bottle? The Motown bottle?
Genius, you don't even know.
Look at me!
What's the Motown bottle?
What's the bottle?
Oh, the view at the pond, at the mountain? So if you stand like at the, right at the
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Place where the, the seating is, at the pond, can't talk, and you look out at the pond, and the mountain, it goes like this, it slopes down. So they call that the bottle, because the shape of the mountain is like a bottle.
Oh, I never
Yeah.
I never thought of that one.
So that is like that, if you took a picture from that view of the mountain, it's, looks like a bottle lake down.
That is very
Fits a lot of breweries and stuff.
You don't forget, we have three tattoo shops in town, they're all graphic designers.
Right, true.
Are you proposing we go get some tattoos and we're gonna be
Well, there's a
I hate tattoos.
There's a difference, too, between people who are used to creating logos versus, you know, art.
But they're all
But they're, they're all art, but you know what I mean, that's a different, it's a different niche.
And, and, and their thing is, they take people's ideas and they turn them into graphics, so that's what they do.
That's true.
And they're all trained these days.
Yeah, but logos have a, a unique purpose, like, there's a lot of intricacies that go into creating, communicating through a logo, you know what I mean? I don't know, it's a different, it's a specific art form, but
So, okay, so where are we at? So, graphic design, application.
Application for the booths.
East Hampton Media.
We've got the, we've got the hardware covered, so tables and tent.
And we're gonna ask, we're gonna get the video camera down there, and we're gonna have, ask people, and we're gonna be, if they hand out magnets, if they participate in videotaping, or whatever, maybe. And we're gonna ask them like their, like, what is a great neighbor, what does a great neighbor mean to you in three words?
What would a great neighbor do for you?
Yeah.
What have you done as a neighbor?
What makes a great neighbor? What, what does it mean to be a great neighbor, what makes a great neighbor?
What makes a great neighbor?
What makes a great neighbor?
And I was also thinking we could have like a list, maybe of how to be a good neighbor or something, not that people are gonna be flocking to get these things, wanna carry it around, honestly, but like, just to even start to formulate, like, I was thinking of even like, no more than ten things, like, ideas of how to be a great neighbor, be a great neighbor, just start to promote the message.
So, you know, in that, I just had this idea, too, we talked about people writing things up potentially, which I don't know if we wanted to do in the video, cause it seems like it's getting a lot, and we're here and there. But people are gonna be like, three words, whatever, I'm wondering if we should have a backdrop already with some words, that people can sort of pull from.
Action.
You know, like, so then, you know, they'll, they'll, it, it will help them if they feel like
Pick their idea.
They're on the spot, yeah, I mean, I don't think it's like, I don't think it's cheating, I just think it's helping people crystallize their thoughts, like, because if somebody, if you're not expecting the question, you know, you're not gonna have those words. And I think we can have some words, and people might choose words, similar words, or cinnamon
Cinnamon.
Cinnamon.
Cinnamon, I like cinnamon.
So, so, I, I, I take improv classes, and I also study, anyway, I won't go into that. It's sort of, it's sort of like on TV, but word associations are
Yes.
Very easy for people, actually, it's far easier than you would think.
Okay.
Like, there really is, so I don't think we necessarily have to put up a lot of words for people.
Right.
But
What about a banner?
Yeah, I was saying, do we want a banner on the
Do we want a banner for the booth? Just that says East Hampton Community Relations Committee.
Probably a good idea, we need an identifying
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah, so the last time we got a banner, it was really, it was huge, it was almost the full ten feet of the space. It came, we got it from
Puffer Style?
Puffer, they do those things. I can't remember, but it was affordable, so
Yeah.
Two-color, you know.
If we do Community Relations Committee with our logo on the side or something.
So we need, so we need that logo
Yeah.
For all of these things, so that's, that's a priority, so I think that's our first big push.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually
So now, okay, hopping back to that subject again, so we've kind of got two things going here, really, because we're talking about a logo, which I realize is my fault, because I brought that up, but we're talking about a logo, and then we're also talking about bumper sticker arts.
Bumper magnet art and
T-shirts.
T-shirts.
And t-shirts.
Which is not necessarily a logo.
Right, it's not a logo.
Not necessarily the same thing as a logo design, so
Well, we might not have a logo design, yeah.
Yeah, it might be really, yeah
I think, I think maybe
We might just go with that.
Just a banner that says East Hampton Community Relations Committee.
Commission.
Yes, yeah.
Committee, right.
Is it commission or committee?
Committee.
Or committee.
I thought it was commission, but
Really?
It used to be, it was on the
In the very beginning, it was, but I think
It was, but it changed to East Hampton Community Relations Committee.
I think when this counselor voted on it, they changed it that time.
Oh, okay, great.
That's what I thought.
Right, time's up.
So I think that banner should just be the banner.
Yeah.
With just that, no logo.
And we can use that for any time we do a pop-up event.
Right. But, I mean, but if our hashtag great neighbors thing is really beautiful or catchy, like
We do a, we do a small one, yeah, cause the banner's gonna be like across the top of the booth. And then those other little hanging things can be like the two-by-fives, two-by-five little flaggy things that, that they can line back.
Cause I think that's, that might be too many words, if we wanna identify ourselves and then have the East Hampton hashtag great, I think that's too could be too cluttered. Maybe it'd be one thing if we had like a, as you said, a logo, like a circle logo you put in the corner of, that wasn't
You can actually get those to slip on banners.
Oh, interesting. But I'm not sure, East Hampton, I don't think of a logo that, of words, I think of it more as a
Yeah.
Like, where I work, it's a bird, it's a
Right.
So it's an outline of a, and that's sort of a logo piece, but we have, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do you wanna throw out like a thought, oh, so the banner's gonna cost us money?
Yeah.
So are we
Like a hundred and fifty bucks or something.
Can we, we can get the money, like
Oh, I think if we stay under a thousand dollars, we can, you know, we can beg for that. For, for, you know, if we can stay under a thousand dollars for all the things we wanna have there, I think we'd, we'd be pretty good, I don't think we'd get any flack for that.
I would ask for thirteen hundred.
I would, fifteen?
I would ask for fifteen.
She already talked to the mayor and somebody could get money, did you miss that?
No, I remember that, I remember asking, like, yeah.
We didn't
And then I asked her again.
Oh, you did ask again?
Privately.
Well, yeah, but, well, the meeting I remember, she said
Yeah.
A, a sort of hesitant yes, she's kind of was like
Yeah, that's a little more positive, like, ask her directly.
Okay, so I just wanna know, like, if we pursue and go into Puffer and say, we need this, and he says, okay, it's two hundred bucks, and
Right now, I mean, if we get the t-shirts made, I'm just saying, they're just for us right now, yeah.
Yeah, we're only gonna get a few of those, and if they, everybody says, ooh, I want one of those, if all of a sudden, for some strange reason, we become popular.
I think people are gonna, like, I think to the point of trying to get a great design on them, and then I think we do something, and I think they become like East Hampton's
Oh, the bumper stickers?
No, the
Bumper magnets?
Bumper magnets.
T-shirts.
The t-shirts. T-shirts, they say, yeah, hashtag great.
I think eventually we'd be able to sell them. So it's funny, cause like, I don't even know, it was like ten years ago, I was at Amy's place, and the mayor was in there with, well, I don't know if it was ten years ago, anyway, Karen was in there, and she was the mayor at the time, but it was a long time ago, anyway.
Cause it's been that long.
No, it wasn't ten years, yeah.
Whatever, yeah.
It was the last five years, yeah.
What, five years ago?
Yeah.
I don't know, anyway, she was in there, talked with a bunch of people, and they were talking about making a t-shirt for, like, people were like, you know, people want a t-shirt for East Hampton.
Cool.
And I remember I got dragged into the conversation, and I was like, well, blah, 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 blah. And they wanted something really boring, like, just an e, so
Cool.
I think we should make
Yes, yes.
Alright, so are we, are we, do we know what we're doing?
Yes, well, I thought mine used to
I, I'm going, I'm going to get ahold of Elizabeth and see if she's willing to work with Deb on getting, and then I will let everybody know one way or the other, and I will connect you personally.
Okay.
And do you have a copy of this, with all the, our phone numbers?
You know what, I don't think I have Deb.
Yeah, cause that was an add-on, so I want you
But let me see, fine. And just very quickly, I did have one assignment, which I also did today, so I didn't get it answered that.
I didn't see them.
I know, it's on there, I was gonna connect with a guy that's part of East Hampton Neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I did send him an email while we were talking.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're asking of
Who is East Hampton Neighbors?
What is, what is that? It's like, it's like, it's like neighbors helping neighbors, it's new, it's new, North Hampton has one, it's
Well, I'll make a review since we have
It's called something a little different.
People that are on, I'm just questioning here about
You know
Cause that's their job, is to
So the way the North Hampton one works is
Say people are on or off.
Yeah. You sign up to be about the
It's probably in your
You sign, you say, I'll help, if somebody could help, and then, you know
Well, just
On the Senior who lives in town
And I have my, I can help me remove all the sticks from my yard, and so they put it out, and then you say, oh, hey, I live around the corner, I can do that.
And match up needs of seniors with people who are wanting to help. So I, I need a ride somewhere, something, or I just had surgery and I can't shovel my driveway, whatever it is, so it's a, it's a matching service of volunteers for its needs. And in North Hampton, it's focused just on seniors, I don't know if that's the case in East Hampton or not.
I'm not sure, that's why I wanna, yes.
But it's new, fairly new in East Hampton, and it's being modeled, I believe, after the North Hampton
Yeah.
One, and it's like neighbors helping neighbors, which makes me, like, that was originally the idea I had, thinking of this
Yeah.
Commute, like, this whole neighbor thing, I kept thinking of that kind of thing, too, as part of this being great neighbors, and at the time, didn't even realize that we already had that rolling in East Hampton, which is very exciting.
Yeah.
That, that's moving, and that's, that's wonderful, because that's enough of an entity to
I took it so
Oh, yeah, see, you know, I heard that one.
So hopefully, in our community, we're gonna
Well, yeah.
They're in
Yeah, I think so, and I'll talk, I'll talk to Chris and see.
Get their own
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we can look down the road as we move forward to look at how we can help promote each other.
Yeah.
So our, our next meeting is when?
Second.
Oh, April
April second, yes.
April second?
No, no.